Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kabner.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a regime just for all.
Item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 17th, 2016. Item B is accept a seven and a half foot public easement located on Lot 10, Block 1 of the High School Edition being south of North Fifth Street and east of Broadmoor Avenue for a water line extension. Item C is approve an agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for FY 2017 Emergency Management Program grant in the amount of $25,000. Item D is approve and ratify claims expenditures for FY 2016-2017 in the amount of $3,505,756.81.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of resolution number 86816, changing a street name from Flooded Creek Street to Pebble Creek Street in the final plat of Edgewater Edition, Section 1, located south of Southwest 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane, application by Rocky Clark.
Mayor and council, Mr. Clark approached me several weeks ago about changing the name of Flooded Creek Street to a different name. He seems to be having problem with the marketing of the homes on that street.
Yeah.
I will say that there are no homes that are being lived in on that street right now, so if he was going to change the street name, now is a good time to do that. Won't affect any wedding, any homeowners. If you have any questions, he did select Pebble Creek Street. That's not a duplicate of the street name that we already have. It would work fine for this addition. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider the final plat of Gan Retail located in the northeast quarter of Section 22 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southwest 4th Street and west of Telephone Road, application by JM LLC Mark Grubbs. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7-0. Send Ward 3.
Mayor and council, items number four and five on your agenda are companion items. This site is located south of Southwest 4th Street and west of South Telephone Road. The property was rezoned to C4 as part of the Little River Edition plat in 1986, but was never actually platted. Final plat was never filed at county. This property has since remained vacant. Although the zoning is in place for the use of a retail development, again, our city code does require that all property must be platted prior to development. Water and sewer are available to serve the site. There is no flood plain located on the property. Access is available from Southwest 4th Street and South Telephone Road. Curb cuts shall be minimized to mitigate adverse traffic impacts near the intersection of 4th and Telephone. Stafford wins approval of the final plat. The companion item to release a portion of a sanitary sewer easement is in front of you. This sewer line was relocated in 2009 to bypass the site. They did that in order to prepare the property for development, but the easement was then released at county. So this item simply releases that portion of the sanitary sewer easement. The plat will then establish permanent easements around the boundary of the property as is normal these days. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a partial release of sanitary sewer easement as recorded in book 208, page 97 at the Cleveland County Records Office, located south of Southwest 4th Street and west of Telephone Road, excuse me, application by JPM LLC Mark Grubbs, Ward 3.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider More Vision 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, number 56, located in the northeast quarter of Section 30 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southeast 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane Road, from rural residential to medium commercial, application by Sandra Flippo. Planning Commission recommended denial of this item 7 to 0. This is in Ward 1.
Mayor and council, items number six and seven on your packet are companion items. This property is located south of Southeast 19th Street and on the west side of South Sunny Lane Road. The lot is currently zoned A1 Rural Agricultural District within existing home on approximately 10 acres. The applicant is proposing to rezone the northern six acres of the property to C5 Automotive and Commercial Recreation District to be developed as a mini storage facility. This will actually be an expansion of the existing mini storage facility that's near that corner. A 12-inch water line is available along South Sunny Lane Road. The city sewer is not available and is not proposed to be extended to this site. We do allow some businesses to operate without sanitary sewer, and mini storages are one of those businesses because they don't have people using the restroom, the public using the restroom. Access is provided by South Sunny Lane Road. There is no flood plain located on this property. The site is shown on the comprehensive plan as a low-density residential land use because C5 uses fall within the commercial land use designation and amendment to the comprehensive plan as required. More Vision 2020 does discourage strip development along arterial roadways on the east side of Moore. That's in order to preserve the residential character of the area. The plan encourages commercial development to be centralized near arterial street intersections. Staff does believe that by expanding the existing four-acre commercial zoning to add six additional acres to this area, the intent of the comprehensive plan could be compromised. Due to the large acreage involved with this request to C5 and the potential future impacts on the residential character of the area, staff does recommend a denial of this application and the companion application. The planning commission did vote to deny the application, and the applicant is here tonight to give you some more information. She was unable to be at the planning commission meeting, and so she's hoping to give you more information about her project. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I'm just curious what was the planning commission? Was there much discussion?
Well, I should note that there were no protesters at the meeting. So the concern was about how the strip development would impact the future residential development of the area. So on the comprehensive plan, that entire area is shown as low-density residential, and that's one of the reasons why the comprehensive plan focused the commercial to the intersections of the arterial roadways. And so I believe that that was one of their biggest concerns. They also just had a concern about the C5 zoning in general. And honestly, since she was not able to be at the planning commission, there were some unanswered questions. So they may not have had all the answers.
Here's a guy to speak.
Good evening. Well, a couple of things if I could pass out to you, which you have a little bit more of a look or thought of. More paper, but.
Elizabeth, I'm just asking that now, like to answer some of our questions, but it would be possible for this planning question, I mean, I'd like for them to have an opportunity to ask questions as well and to maybe help.
Sure, it is possible. What the council could do tonight is either deny the application, in which case she would, I would work with her to make changes and bring it back through Planning Commission and City Council, or you could just request it to be tabled and sent back to the planning commission, in which case they would hear the same application, but she would be able to be there to.
Is that what you want to do?
Well, that's, yeah.
Since you wasn't heard at the planning commission, it's like we're kind of skipping a step.
I mean, I'm, you're here, I'd be glad to listen to what you have to say.
I would love to get a chance to visit with you if I could for a few seconds.
Sure, absolutely.
And I appreciate what you're saying. I literally was sick, sicker to dog with no voice at the last one, and I'd asked my contractor to represent me, and a lot of their questions was, what was my tent yet? And he didn't have that information, all of it. So, my name's Sandy Flippo. But just as Elizabeth had shared, we've got six acres next to the keepsakes self-storage, and we're wanting to expand. We are full. When I say full, we have a waiting list on almost every unit we've got. We filled up within about five months of the latest expansion. The original builder filled up in about six months. And I know that that is really not maybe the key critical issue here, but it, part of, I guess, my major point that I'd want to share is that you all are just booming around here and around our area, as you know or not, they're just growing and growing and growing with these houses and developments. And mini storages are literally kind of goes hand in hand because most of those places, homes, they either do not have as many garages as they'd like, they can't park things out on the street, all the things that make for a nice city. And so when the town grows, the self-storages almost end up being more, and I don't want to say in demand for my sake, but it really does become an issue for a city. So when I say we're full, part of that is to stress, number one, the growth. But the second one is, and of course, I'm completely prejudiced, but we have great mini storage. We do the eight inches of concrete at the drive, so we're not one of those that, you know, after a few years, you see it all busted up at the front. That ain't going to happen. We've got eight inches out there. We put that at all of the times. We have, like you all did not require us to do ornamental iron, but we did to make it pretty. Our shrubbery is almost twice of what was in the original plan that you all were wanting. So when I say we have a great one, we have guys coming in your city from five or six miles off to come to our facility. So, you know, that's just kind of a nutshell of a background there on it, bragging one, I guess, but it's, we are proud of it, and I think you have a great need for it. The planning committee, my understanding, the key points that did not let this go through, I think are partly on some things that are maybe mistaken or misunderstood. When we very first asked about expanding on this land, we, again, it's self-storage. The reason it became C5 had nothing to do with what we are wanting to do. The C5 was, it was explained to us that we would have to brick it all if it was C3. I hope I'm being accurate on, at least that was my understanding. We said, well, we didn't want to break it because ours is stucco, and we wanted it to match. It's kind of a, just a thing. You know, you hate for things not to look sharp. So we said, well, we are wanting brick, wanting stucco. That shifted it up at that time to the C5. Unbeknownst, in my experience, the C5 put it as heavy industrial. So all the questions that really got hit with long-term planning was that it was going to open you all up to heavy industrial there, and that is nothing of what we're wanting to do. So the objections they had, that Elizabeth and I have tried to line out, and we've tried to meet every one of those objections. One of the objections was, and if you kind of look at your graph there, originally, we had said, let's do our expansion to the back of the property and fill that up first. So their concern was, well, what are you going to do at the front? Because it's going to show to everyone. We said, well, there really wasn't a reason that we chose the back over the front. And by that, I'm saying the west, the west side of the property versus the east. So we said, we'll immediately just go ahead and shift the whole thing to the east so that they would know immediately across Sunny Lane Road what would be there. They wouldn't be worried what kind of heavy industrial might be coming out in the future. So we moved that to the front. Their concern, of course, is still that that leaves out of the six acres to rezone, that leaves about two acres that they're saying, what are you going to do in the future? And that's their main worry, is best that I understood what the issues were. So, a couple of things. We had offered, said, you know, can I do an affidavit? I do not want heavy industrial. That was never any part of what we want to do. I own mini storages, and we've got waiting lists for people wanting more units. The only reason at this point that I'm not filling up the whole thing is financial. If I literally put that much into it, and you're carrying interest while you're waiting, well, let's fill up. So our thought was, let's, you know, do about two-thirds of it, and as that starts to fill up, then we get to go ahead and finish out what we're doing. The other concern that they had had was that it is residential around there. And they wanted some kind of a buffer between, you know, business and, and there's only a few houses back there behind us. But so we had said, well, then we'll do, you know, detention pond, pine trees, this type of a thing. So that was what we had laid out, you know, with Elizabeth and to share of what our changes were there. They had, again, I think, one of their main concerns when they turned us down at the long term was that they just didn't have me to answer some things. And so part of it was, what are you going to do in the future with it? When I said, could I bring an affidavit, they explained to me, and I get it, that that doesn't help you all a lot because that attaches onto me. That's my commitment of saying, we're not going to do anything else. We want mini storage. That's what we're wanting. But I catch, after many discussions, that if I would die, walk out of here tonight and die, and you all have approved this thing at C5, you're still stuck with somebody that could come in, you know, tomorrow and make this into something else. My first plan's not to walk out and die tonight. It's very top on my list. You know, I had asked a couple of things earlier today, whether it could possibly be approved contingent on whether it be a PUD that we would furnish so that you all would know for sure what the property was going to be used for, regardless of anything happening to me one way or the other. You know, I'm told for that to happen, that would have to go back through kind of the whole cycle. And I do appreciate very much that that is something, just like you're saying, put it back through the long-term planning. The seller that is here with us tonight is not doing well at all. It's either kind of a need to wrap, wrap it up real rapidly. So with that in mind, we're hoping that's not the case. If there's any other options that you have for me to make a commitment legally or that is a comfort zone for you all of saying, hey, we're only doing self-storage. That's all we want to do. Another objection that I understand that they had was just the typical business. Are we loud? Are we interrupting kind of the residential field and flow around there? Mini storages, we only have there, I believe, five parking spaces. Ninety-nine percent of the time, they're empty or you've got maybe one or two. Most people do their payments by debit cards anymore. So unless they are coming in, and you just, you don't have that much turnover, partly because we're full. So a mini storage is about as quiet as a business as you honestly get because it just, nobody's hardly there is the key point of it. So I guess my ultimate point is to share that everything that we understood from the long-term planning group, we have addressed, and that hopefully that that will allow you all to feel good about it. Secondly, is just the huge need that you do have here, and that we're about as good of a facility as you'll find. If you know, we're C much in mini storages. No prejudice whatsoever on my part there. So my hope tonight is that, that you can approve this. I've been told that it was probably a waste of my time to come where it was already turned on the other. I'm hoping that's not the case. I'm hoping that you'll approve this. I think it'll be good for the people that live around there. We seem to have that as evidence just because they seem to be lined up on our waiting list from one end. I think also the fact that we really don't have anyone that seems to be against this. So we're hoping you will approve this. We are, the last point is, we're actually ready to go. Our financing is in place. We have all of our bids that have been turned in from Moore. Almost everything we're using are from businesses here in Moore. So everything's pretty much ready to go because we are with a bit of a, some time issues hitting us. So we're, that's my sales pitch for the night, guys. And I appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Elizabeth, I have a question. Is that, is that your storage units or C5s?
Is that correct zoning for that?
Yes, so storage, mini storage is allowed by right in C5. It's a use on review in C3. And when talking with Ms. Flippo in the very beginning, we were going through the pros and cons of C5 versus the C3. It was my understanding at that time anyways, that she was going to do the metal siding, which is not allowed in the C3.
Okay.
That's only allowed in the C5. It sounds like either I was mistaken or maybe the plans have changed, but that was my understanding at the time.
So if she went through, ahead with the stucco, then that would allow them, allow the zoning of the C3?
They could go to a C3 with a use on review, yes.
Either way, it's still go back through the process of the planning commission. Probably a better way, if you're going to do that, is to go with a PUD on it to guarantee exactly what it's going to be.
Right.
But either one of those ways would have to go back through the process.
In order to facilitate her sale, could we do a contingent as a go-ahead-and-pass-it contingent on her redoing the C3?
I don't think that's allowed.
Can I do that or any?
How long a process is it to go back through? About a month?
Could they get on the December?
Yeah, well, what is today, it's the 7th, and the December meeting is on the 13th. I think we have 20 days. So, I mean, I have to look at a calendar, but it could be possible that we can get it on the December meeting.
Not city council, but.
Right.
Planning, yes, I don't know what I said. Planning commission.
So we could see if they okay, regardless, we could see it for part June. We're, it's like one meeting. Yeah, I don't see if there's anything, my personal thought is, coming to us the way it is, I don't see anything that I want to approve tonight, but I certainly have no issues with going back through it.
I would agree with that. And Sandra just kind of had on that, the planning commission, I know they had many questions, and you tried to address them to us. However, I wasn't present at the planning commission meeting, and I don't know if anyone else was. So it makes it really challenging to, for us to make sure those are all the needs that were addressed during that meeting. And I know we've read the minutes, and where it's up to date as can be, but since, since I wasn't there and I don't know all of the needs.
Well, I would make a motion that we send this back to the planning commission at the early convenience, or by then?
Let's second that.
Okay, it's a motion?
Yes.
And a second. We have a motion and a second to send it back to planning commission.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Okay, we're going to send it back to planning?
Hopefully, it should go to be on the December.
Fast track it.
Twenty, almost 30 days.
Yeah, I should say December.
Thirteenth.
Okay, that would be great.
I think we've got that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to skip item seven?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to skip item seven.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to table and a second. Would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item was tabbed and skipped. Item number eight is consider approval of memorandum of understanding with Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Incorporated for award of a grant in the amount of $17,009.26 to be used towards purchase of a Bullseye Digital Fire Extingishing Training System Package and accessories as a sole source. This is from Emergency Management.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a little bit of information about this system and what we would use it for. We teach at least twice a year a class called CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, in which we prepare regular. in which we prepare regular citizens to do actions they can take after a disaster in order to make sure that their families are safe, and, and then assist neighbors around them, base in first aid, CERT, like CERT to Rescue, and one of the other pieces of it is fire suppression. And it's, uh, one of the things that we found really important in CERT is for the people taking the class to have actual hands-on experience. And we do it with all the, the medical and all of the CERT to Rescue, everything. We want them to actually practice them, because it will be easier for them to do it when the time comes, if, if it's needed. The Bullock system includes a digital fire extinguisher simulator, as well as a live burn pan. And so, they are able to practice with a fire extinguisher and see how it feels to actually use one, to put out the simulated fire. And then, with the help of our fire department, we actually conduct a live burns with the burn pan, and, and they're able to put out those fires as well. So, they're able to actually utilize and discharge a fire extinguisher in their training. And we've, in addition to us using this equipment for these classes, we would also make it available to the fire department and to the city risk management, or whoever, to do that type of training for city employees and whoever else. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay. I think this is time for a commercial. Everybody should eat at Firehouse Subs, 'cause they're really good and they help us a lot.
They, they just continue to do that.
Yeah, they really do. And, I mean, we got a trailer nice year, all kinds of stuff.
You know, this is probably, probably eighty, ninety thousand dollars worth of grants that we've gotten from them over time.
So, thank you, Firehouse Subs.
Absolutely.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a second. Any other comments, advertising or anything? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of a change order in the amount of forty thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars sixty-eight cents for STP 114B 249 AG STP dash 155 Eastern Avenue from Northeast 27th Street to North City Limits.
Mayor, just a little bit of procedural on this. You may recall that this project was Eastern Avenue from 27th, I think probably all the way up to 74th Street in Oklahoma City. And it was a joint project with us in Oklahoma City, and a federal project where the city, we put in twenty percent of the share of our part of it, which is that half a mile that's in our city limits. The project is built, it's been done now for, what, two or three years. They eventually go in and audit these, the books or the final project. And if there's any differences in terms of the amount of money that we put up in the beginning, they'll either bill us for that amount, which is this, or occasionally, we'll get a little bit of money back on these projects after we've put the twenty percent share up. And we put this money back up, I believe, in about 2012. So, we don't have any choice but to pay it, but that's why it's so late coming to you for you to see.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
All right, thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of a budget supplements for FY 16, or 2016, 2017, for prior year's purchase order carryovers as follows. Risk management, forty-two thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars seven cents. More economic development authority, two hundred dollars. Street bonds improvements, excuse me, street bond improvements, one million one hundred four thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars fifty-five cents. More public works authority, one million four hundred eighty thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars forty-three cents. The general fund, eight hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars fifty-four cents. The special revenue fund, six hundred forty-six dollars, eight hundred, excuse me, six hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred ten dollars. Half-cent designated sales tax, two million eighty-three thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars thirty-six cents. Park improvement sales tax, five hundred twenty-six thousand one hundred two dollars thirty cents. Parks GO bonds, eight hundred sixty-one thousand seventy-five dollars. CDBG DR grant, nine million one hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the annual budget resolution that's, that's presented to you to amend the budget for all of the unpaid items as of June 30, and add that to the budget for the current year. And the reason this is presented to you is just because our books are kept on a budgetary basis. And so, the expenditures are recorded when they're, in the period that they're paid, regardless of when they might have actually been incurred. And so, this is just, this is a housekeeping item to bring this up to date, and would encourage your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in the second. Any other comments or questions? If not, would you call for the vote?
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you, sir. Item number 11, consider approval of a budget amendment for FY 2016, 2000, excuse me, 2015, 2016, and Fund 15, CDBG dash DR, in the amount of three hundred five thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars ninety-nine cents to account for overage in disaster recovery expense.
Once again, Mayor and Council, this is an item where the expenditures were greater than what the initial budget was. In this particular program, it's kind of difficult to forecast just exactly how much we're gonna spend in these various line items, because of the approval process. And so, these are monies that were expended in fiscal year 15, 16, but we have been reimbursed from HUD, so it's a, it's just a housekeeping item.
Okay, good.
Move to approve? Second.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 12 is receive a presentat, excuse me, a presentation and demonstration of the new History of Moore website, and discuss future opportunities to preserve and promote the History of Moore. Mark, I think this is it.
If you will look on the screen, you'll see the History of Moore website, and you can access this by going to historyofmoor.com, and this will come up. And just, uh, there's, a little over a year ago, the city council put together an ad hoc committee, and we met, our first meeting was in the old Moore High School building, and then we met multiple times throughout the year, talking about a museum, and what that might look like in Moore. And so, we began that conversation, can quickly become quite overwhelming. So, we thought, we'll want, we, someplace where we can gather all this information, not have to build a building, and it will be on the web. So, we came up with a History of Moore webpage. And so, historyofmoor.com, you come over here, and at the, the bottom of the homepage, there are two videos. And these videos, the city had produced a few years back. This one is about, I suppose, the, the train stop, or whistle stop, and it's about Moore's history, it's about an hour long. And this video on your far right is about the, if these halls could talk, and it's about the old high school building, which is just mainly south of us, and a lot of the students who had attended that building, and that's about thirty-five minutes or so. So, if you get an opportunity, you can go to, to this website, and you can watch both those videos. And then, just some of the features on our webpage. One, I'll go, these quick, share your own story. So, you just go here, you click Share Your Story, and as you can see, it's, it's pretty simple. You just kind of list up here the decade, your story, your photographs, your name, and then you, you can also click on the decades, and then you can write your story. Or you can go down here to browse and upload photographs, or a Word document, or something that you've already, you've already prepared. Future plans, and again, this is future, none of this is set in stone, these were just ideas that the, the committee came up with, the things that we might like to see happen. Either, you know, this is the old train depot, which is over on 27th Street, so maybe get that, if we can't, maybe we're able to build a replica. We have the, the building and the floor plan of what it looks like, so we might be able to build something else over here, by the train tracks where it used to be. This was just a, a possible plan of what, it might look like that here is, I believe, I can't, I know it's there, I can't really see any of the details from here, but I believe this is Main Street, and this is 4th Street, and this is the train tracks. And we'd like to, to possibly create a trail that goes through here, and have the History of Moore, maybe the depot, or something. And all this museum is, here would be a building, again, it would be outside. As you're out walking along the trail, you can begin to learn about Moore's history, talk about the possibility of having a, an app for your iPhone, or an iPad, and you could pull that up along the train tracks, and you could watch a steam engine coming down the train tracks, as it used to be years ago. Or you could go a little further and see where the train depot was, or even go over onto Main Street, and look at where the first Waldo, and some of the other old buildings that worked there on our Main Street in Moore. So, it can be an interactive tour of Old Town, and some of the Moore's interesting stuff. And this was exciting. So, you click on this tab, Moore, Moore's history, and it has it listed out over here by the decades. And so, I wrote some of them, we're gonna just look at real quick. So, let's go to the 1910s. So, you go to the left, click on the 19th end, that day tab, and then it will bring up photos of all the, as best as we can tell, of things that had, were during that decade of the 10s. So, here's, here is an interesting, you can go up here, the Howard Motor Company, what is that? You click on that, tab right underneath it. And then, the photo will load. And, uh, what I'm doing right now is, these will be things that will be happening tomorrow, as we're watching the debates, as we're waiting for souls to come in, just trying to fill air while it happens.
Good idea.
There it is. So, this is, uh, the Howard Motor Company, or as we probably are familiar with them now, the Bob Howard Auto Mall. It was right here in Moore, Oklahoma, and these are some, some of the photos, and then there's little tabs, and you can scroll through some of the other photos there. I believe the Howard Motor Company, they used to work on the, the buggies, the horse, horse and buggies, and, and then they went into automobiles and had their first Chevrolet shop here. Just a couple of other interesting photos, and there's a lot on here, and I really encourage you go look at some of them. Let's go to the 40s, that was an interesting decade. And this is a lot of photos from the 40s. And, you know, just before we came into the city council meeting tonight, we had a look at Moore, a, a brand-new fire truck that the city has just received, and I think it's about a little over a million dollars, a little over a million dollars. Well, this was the city's first fire truck in 1947, and it was a truck that was, had a lot of purposes, and it had been outfitted to be a fire truck. And I promise you, these guys that are in, these volunteer firefighters, were just as excited about this truck as we were about that one out there tonight. And there's a little history on this that I read, I think it cost around, about seventeen hundred dollars, or so, and I'm not even sure if the city was able to meet its full financial obligation on that. But what a, what a cool piece of history, and that thing lighting fires here in Moore. And then, we'll just look at one more photo from the 40s that I like. And, is that the 40s? Sorry. Yes, I know it. Right here, this is a 1947 FFA banquet, and it was held right across the street in the old high school building. And if you look, this is the stage where they would do the school play, this is the curtain, right up here. On the other side of the curtain is the auditorium where all the seats were. So, this is the stage, and if you look, there's the basketball goal, there's one on each side, so the students would watch school plays, they would have basketball games here, band concerts, and events like this. Just all kinds of, of activities were happening at the high school. So, that is just a, a brief, and then it's little captions at the bottom, a little bit about. So, that's just a brief explanation and introduction to the history of Moore, and it's our hope that it will continue to grow. And as, as you begin to look at it, if you're listening, or people in the audience, and you find things that are inaccurate, or, or that need to be corrected, you can go right down here, where it says Email Us, click on that email, and then submit that, and it'll be reviewed and looked at, and we'll definitely want it to be historically accurate as possible. And just a few things that I've heard from some people, we need to, uh, I would, one, I'd like to take all these pictures in the chambers here of the past mayors, put them on the website, and then also some of our ward leaders, from all the different wards, the men and women that live here in this community, that went off the ward, and there are a lot of them. And, let me, let me show you one more, I'm sorry. And Todd Jensen showed me this. Is that nineteen hundred? I cannot fix the.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you. All right, here we are, the applicant, Henry Applegate, our first mayor, and his wife and daughter. And he was also, Todd on our right, he was neither a, a Civil War veteran, Todd knows a, a lot about Moore's history, and if you ever go to our Central Park, there's pictures of him. So, that, you know, we're really fortunate and blessed to have a great community with a lot of history, and this is just the, the beginning of some of the things that we'd really like to do, to always be able to tell Moore America's history to the people that are interested in it. And, you know, they're projecting our community to grow by another twenty thousand people in the next twenty years or so, and those are a few new people that haven't grown up here and won't know anything about it. So, here's a place where they can go learn about it. And we're gonna continue to update and make improvements, and make the History of Moore website a good place for people to go. So, look at it, please give us, just your feedback. And I'm incredibly grateful for the committee that helped put this together. It took a long time and a lot of work, but I'm pretty happy with what we've done. So, thank you guys very much.
Good job, Mark.
Thanks.
This is kind of a project that still gives us our small-town feel, as we continue to grow. It's really nice, good job. Okay, at this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene, oh, wait, I have an addendum, I'm sorry, I thought it was at the end of the line. We have an addendum here on 12.1, Consider Adopting Resolution Number 86616, approving the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG Clean Air Grant for Public Sector Fleet Grant Application.
Mayor and Council, in 2012, Congress enacted MASP 21, a performance-based transportation system, funding, under MASP 21 allows for long-term energy alternative grants for public, public sector fleets. The city adopted in 2012 an alternatives fuel vehicle replacement plan. The plan includes replacing our diesel-fueled sanitation trucks with CNG. This is a reimbursement and replacement program through the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. The city will be requesting to replace two diesel sanitation trucks. It allows the city to request reimbursement for incremental costs to convert the truck to CNG. The cost per truck is three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The conversion cost is eighty-six thousand. We're making the grant request approximately a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for, for the two trucks. Two sanitation trucks are currently budgeted in this budget cycle. Staff recommends approval of this grant. I'll be happy to take any questions.
We've been working towards converting all of our sanitation trucks to the CNG trucks for some time now, and we've had this grant once or twice before.
Twice.
Which is, you know, helps along the way to be able to buy these trucks with that added cost for the CNG, that's eighty-something thousand dollars per truck. But the cost savings in terms of the fuel and the emissions and all that are, well, make that up, so.
Okay. They're gonna make us do it anyway, so this is the law coming out, reduce your emissions. So anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Harry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Thank you, sir. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item number thirteen is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held October seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen in the amount of nine hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars six cents.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Harry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, item number fourteen, consider the renewal of health benefit consulting agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services for one year at the current rate of sixty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
Mayor Trustees, the staff believes that Gallagher has done a good job as our health benefit consultants. The staff recommends approval of this item for one year at the current price. Be happy to answer any questions, and if you have any questions of Gallagher, David Fleet with Gallagher is here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Harry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number fifteen is the consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held October seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand sixteen, or excuse me, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars sixty-five cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. Everybody get their questions answered as far as the claims or any notes or changes to the minute. If so, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Harry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number sixteen is new business. Item A is citizens' forum for items not on the agenda. If there's no one signed up, would anyone like to speak? Okay? Item B is items from the city council or trustees. And I have a couple. One, I got a call from Bruce Lawrence about a week or so ago and says they're building us a new hospital, and you probably read about it in the paper, it's a microhospital down on their property on South I thirty-five, and hopefully, this will allow us to go back to ODOT and get off-ramps, and, cause this is definitely going to be built. So congrats to them and congrats to us if we can get the off-ramps too. So that'll be nice. And also, on Thirty-Fourth and Broadway, South Thirty-Fourth and Broadway, there is a nasty, nasty sewer smell, it's been going on for about three or four weeks, and I wonder if we could get Mr. Satish's engineering company to look at that and see what we need to do to fix it.
Sure.
Cause the teachers at Broadmore are protesting, which I don't blame them, it just, it's ridiculous.
That's been a problem for some time. My, I thought that was part of something that the school system was doing.
No, that's across the street, it's us.
Well, I thought it was over at the Ag Barn or whatever.
We need to find out, so, I don't know.
Well, I think I know what it is, but we'll see, we'll get them to look at it to see if there's anything that, that can be done.
Well, it has to be done.
Yeah, it stinks.
It's, I mean, there's a-
It's part of my bike ride, and I ride through there.
Yeah, it'll choke you.
The other day it was bad.
Yeah, okay. Then the, the other question I've gotten from several people, why are we resurfacing Broadway between Fourth and Nineteenth after we just did it a year ago? I have no answer for that.
We didn't do it just a year ago, it's been several years since that street was repaved, but it's being paid for with DR funds, CDBG DR funds.
Okay.
And we thought it was necessary as far as the new roadway in front of the park and with the widening that we did at Southwest Ninth Street to put the traffic signal in there.
It looks nice.
We just thought it would look good to make the whole thing.
Just got a lot of questions. It's been-
Yeah, and then those funds can't be used in other parts of the cities, so that people understand that, so.
Right.
Okay.
It was a part of the, the second geobahn in the past, in other words, the one with City Avenue, Broadway.
No, it's been several years since that was built.
It's been a number of years.
I think their point was that was probably one of the nicest roads in town, why did we do it? So, but that wasn't the way it was quite put to me, so. I'm just trying to be nice about it. So, okay, that's answered. Okay, anybody else? Any other city council meeting?
I'll make a quick statement, I've been at the station more lately because of the weather and stuff working out. And Todd, the place is gorgeous and awesome and employees are terrific. Totally impressive.
Yeah, very good.
And we had a Rick Todd, the director of parade, Danielle, Melissa, Adam, and myself and the judges.
What float won?
The judges. There were two categories, one was the non-school float, and that was the West Moore High School Special Olympic float.
Okay.
That one, and I can't recall which school, so we'll find it later, but I don't remember. But it was a great time, as always, our director of parade, it was a success, and then I drove through the city the next morning, so there must have been quite a party at Old Town.
There was, a lot of people.
So that, that was great to see the community come out and gather and just celebrate together.
Anybody else?
I have one thing. I work for the American Institute of Architects in my day job, and we do a design awards competition every two years, and we go out, we take it out, take the projects that are entered out to a jury of architects outside of the state of Oklahoma. And one of the projects that was entered was the Central Park, and it won a design award, which is-
Oh wow.
-in our realm is a really big deal for it to be recognized for the design and everything, so congratulations.
Cool.
Excellent.
Do we get to go to Tahiti to pick up the water?
Yeah, we do, it's December second.
It's the second, dang it.
Okay, just kidding. Anybody else? Okay, item C is items from the city manager's test manager.
The only thing I had, Mayor, was just I wanna encourage folks to vote tomorrow.
Yes.
Obviously, we're, we've all heard about the election going on tomorrow, but encourage people to be aware of the city's two initiatives that are, that are on there. And folks are conscious.
Yeah, we have two good ones on there, so please go out and vote. All right, if that's going it, okay, we're gonna go to executive session. Item number seventeen, section three oh seven, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss considering it deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending litigation styled Jared and Cecilia, Todd versus City of Moore CJ dash two zero one one dash two one zero three, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the defendants as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four.
Make motion, we convene the executive session.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Harry Kabner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we are in executive session, and thank you for coming.